We'll open the meeting for Monday, March 25. And entertain a motion to accept the agenda as may be amended.
So moved.
Do you have any reason to move anything?
Take one amendment to it.
What's that?
I'd like to do the reorganization of our board right away, so then the chair can take it from there.
Okay.
So.
Remove six up to number two. Well, after number two.
Just the chair part for this board meeting.
Okay. All right, so all in favor of the agenda as amended, please say aye. Aye. So now we have reorganization of the select board.
I would like to make a motion to continue to use Steve Fenneran as our chair.
I would second that.
Okay.
I'm not going to argue, so. Okay, you sure?
Yeah.
Should close nominations?
Yeah. Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor of the chair, please say aye. And I, of course, can't vote. Do we need to name secretary or something like that?
But we'll do that later on. I just wanted to make sure we get the meeting running, so we have a chair.
Okay. All right. Now, approval of minutes, there are, I have four pages here that's just you and Chris.
Yeah.
So you could do that, and then we could do the one with the three of us.
Yeah, Chris, can you read off each one of the special meetings?
Yeah, I'll read those off. Yeah, here's one here for Monday, March 4th, 1:00 p.m. Once again, executive session for continued contracts with the board with the projects. And we had another one on Monday, March 4th, at 3:00 p.m. Same group and same outcome there. And that's it, I think, of those two that I have.
You also have February 26?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. No, that's a regular one. I was just doing the ones where the Jim and I were in.
Oh, the February 26th, for some reason, I wasn't there.
No, that's, that was Jim's and my meeting.
Okay.
So we had February 26th, let me reread these, 3:00 p.m. We had Monday, March 4th at 1:00 p.m. And Monday, March 4th at 3:00 p.m.
I did throw in your packets, because Linda and I pointed out that the public informational meeting minutes had not been approved at the last meeting, and it should be in your hard packets.
Yep.
Was that the 26th?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes.
It says March 4th.
Yeah.
The special meetings that Chris announced, February 26th, and the other two?
Yeah.
Yeah, second.
I didn't, well, I wasn't at them, so I have no. All in favor of accepting those sets of minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
And then we have February 26th with the full meeting. And again, I didn't have anything there.
This was the.
I'll make.
Okay. Yeah.
I'll make a motion, February 26th, regular meeting.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Okay. Are there any select board feedback and/or concerns at this time?
Do we have to approve of these?
Yes.
Okay. So what do we get?
Oh, he did a different February, is that?
I did March 4th.
He said February 26th.
There were, I think there were three on that day.
I did March.
That date is February 26th on that page, that's why I thought that was.
Yep, no, that's the one here. This is a different format from March 4th.
Yep.
And this was at 7:00 p.m.
Okay.
So motion?
That was.
Yeah, that was a public informational meeting.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, have those minutes for informational meeting on March 4th.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
We got one more, sorry.
Emergency meeting.
The emergency meeting. For Wednesday, March 13th, at 10:00 a.m. It was more continued contract negotiations, no action was ever taken, so. Jim, you want to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the minutes for the emergency meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Now we're done.
Now we're done.
There we go.
Remember feedback and/or concerns. At this time, I don't have anything.
Nope, I don't have anything at this time.
Nope.
I think the guys did a hell of a job.
I was going to say, I heard so many compliments to our road crew, people, I happen to be up on the mountain, and they said, "Do you know how long it would have taken me to get out of my house at home?"
Yeah.
He said, "I went down there this afternoon, the road was already clear."
Yeah, they had some good challenges too, they lost a trucker at one point, a few other things.
Well, and they, like, their cars were stuck places, and like, the wobbly, trying to plow out the wobbly.
Yeah.
There were cars that were stuck, and they couldn't plow out a lot of the roadway.
Yeah.
So that's what kept happening, people that were unprepared for it.
Oh, they did a great job.
They did a great job.
I'll make sure to pass that along to them.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. At this point, we're open to public comment. If there is something that is not already on the agenda, Matt had his hand up, I believe, or was that your point?
No, that's my point.
Oh, okay. You're on the agenda, so you don't get to talk yet. So, at that time, we are with, the reorganization and appointments, which we tabled from the last meeting, some of them have not been filled out yet.
Yes.
Or applied for, I should say.
I have a cheat sheet here of reapointments that I'm going to read out, and then we'll be seeking a motion to appoint these officials. So, seeking a motion to reappoint Ricky Bowers to the planning commission.
So moved.
You want to do individuals?
I can do them all at once, or we can do them one?
We can do them one at a time.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reappoint Roger Rivera to the development review board.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Reappoint Tiffany Hecker to the recreation committee.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye. Reappoint Jim Half as health officer.
Oof. Does he want that?
He didn't say, actually.
Well, I really shouldn't, I really shouldn't stay at myself, guys, but.
I'll nominate, Jim.
I'll second that nomination.
All in favor?
Aye.
Two to one, Jim, you won.
Reappoint Jay Hickory to the Rutland County, I got the acronym wrong here, it's the R-C-S-W-D, the Rutland County Solid Waste District.
Yep.
So moved.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Appoint Will Austin as the Rutland Regional Planning Commission Representative, and Lisa Davis Lewis as the alternative representative.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
And that's it.
On the previous sheet, we had some other pages, like planning commissions, so are we doing that here, or?
There's.
I don't see a page myself.
Okay, yeah, there's only one chair, well, not chair, but there's only one vacancy on the planning commission board. I was going to advertise it online, and I actually did not receive Andy's resignation letter until this weekend.
Okay.
So it's, I was curious to see him still here at the last meeting, but it's because in his mind, he thought, "I'd keep doing it until June."
And you couldn't really advertise it till after he's.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. So why don't we put it on our agenda for the next meeting, now that they'll have been a couple weeks since you got Andy's letter.
Is that the only one we have open?
So Michael?
Yes.
Michael?
Well, aside from fence viewer and coal counter and all that. Yes, yes, Jim. Yes, Jim.
The bus transportation, we met up with Devin Neary.
Yes.
A week ago or whatever, and Chris, since Nam, Young King had stepped down.
Yeah.
That, the group with Matt Kinsman and them, they're looking for somebody for the, to be on the bus. What is that position there, Michael?
You know, I was, that's why I didn't add it, because I was curious whether it was an official title or not, but, yeah, I think it's the Rutland Transportation.
Yeah.
I don't know what it is.
And I would step in with it, but I know you were doing some stuff with the bus, so they were looking for one of the select board members to come down.
Yeah, I'll take care of that. I mean, I've dealt with it long enough, so, sure.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, so Chris will take that position, then, Michael.
Cool. I'll let him know.
Okay.
Okay.
If you have nothing further, then we'll move on.
That's it.
To liquor control. You're up.
Liquor?
Yeah.
I want to first start with an outside consumption limited permit, Killington Restaurants. It's for the Bear Mountain Mogul Challenge, scheduled for April 6.
So moved.
Yeah.
Let the clerk's office move forward.
Yeah. Do you have any questions on that one, Chris?
No.
Okay. All in favor of having the clerk move forward, please say aye.
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 Okay, next we have Back Country Cafe. They've applied, these are all renewals, a first, a third class, and an outside consumption.
Let the town clerk's office move forward for Back Country Cafe.
I have nothing there. All in favor of having the clerk move forward on Back Country Cafe, please say aye.
Aye.
Stay.
Next, we have the Inn at Long Trail for a first and third class.
Make a motion for the town clerk's office to move forward for the Inn at Long Trail.
Second, and I don't have anything to add, so all in favor of the clerk moving forward on Long Trail, please say aye. Aye.
Stay.
Aye.
Next, we have Killington Distillery LLC with a first class, third class, and an outside consumption.
Make a motion for the town clerk's office to move forward with Killington Distillery.
Second, I, these are renewals, I have nothing new on it. All in favor of the clerk moving forward on Distillery, please say aye.
Aye.
Stay.
Okay, last but not least, we have the Killington Market, Inc., with a tobacco license and a second class license.
Make a motion for the town clerk's office to move forward, Killington Market, Inc.
Please say aye. All in favor of moving forward on that, please say aye.
Aye.
Stay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Butch, you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Selection of appraisal firm for resort-owned property.
Do we want to go into executive session?
I'll come to screen. I can. I'd like going in, and then it would go to her or whatever.
Okay. We need executive session, if I was.
Talk about contracts?
Contracts.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah, I will agree with you that, because it, forget about, because there are like three different proposals, Michael. Yeah, so I'd like to move that to executive session.
Okay.
So should we move that down?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. In that case, we will move on to the facility use policy.
Okay, so this was prepared for the last meeting. I've been getting a lot of calls from various parties who want to utilize this space, and I understand it, I understand from reviewing history that it was set up as a community room. The, what came up was, I had some HOAs call wanting to use it, and in my mind, I thought HOAs probably had their own kind of public spaces within their infrastructure, but some do and some don't, what it sounded like. So, I didn't know kind of what the threshold for the use of this space would be, and then that kind of led to the next point of, if groups are using this space, they should probably be insured. VLCT has a town of Killington, Vermont, well, a facility use policy, and so, you know, I didn't make this up, I've used it before in the past. I do have some numbers on here that, I don't want to say arbitrary, but I did have to put something there as a placeholder. So, considering people coming in here and using the facility, using the camera, the television, the tables, the chairs, maybe the kitchen, I had a user fee here of $50.
I think that's shy.
Think it's, think it's low. Yeah.
Am I?
Yeah. On the screen. Yes, sir.
So here's, Kevin, do you mind if I just go ahead? So a few comments.
I'll think about this.
That, you know, we, someone's going to have to come here, unlock their facility, make sure they're powered up, everything, then they have to come back and make sure it's locked up and put away. You know, we leave this building clean, so we're going to have to have it, you bring 35 people in here on Saturday, you would have a mess in here. And I just, you know, I believe there are other places that that type of activity can go on without, that's probably set up for it, whether it's the Grand Hotel, people rented space from me in the past, I don't care about it, it's actually more of a pain than it is for me, anything else, but, and I just, it's, I don't know. But we used to rent the gym for Edmont at the school. And what did you pay for that? Hundred dollars. That's still cheap, you know? It's, I don't know. But they weren't allowed to bring food. Okay. They could bring a water to drink.
That was it.
So I, I'm going to kick in here, I kind of thought when we did this public safety building, and I think Whit, you were involved in it, our house and Steve, you were, I mean, when we said public safety building, fire, police, and then this like community area, but it was supposed to be for like town stuff, community, not like homeowners associations coming in, or, you know, a whole bunch of that other stuff. I thought we had a discussion, Chris and Steve, about this, with the previous town managers, that we weren't allowing homeowners associations, and they, you know, the building's only two years old or three years old, and everybody was doing things elsewhere in the past.
Well, since, since we've pretty much been here, I've been involved, when we moved here, it's been COVID, we didn't even have furniture in the place when we first came here, so.
Right.
I don't know how much of that was discussed, but I, I think if the library wants additional revenue, maybe they should look at it for their organization, but I just kind of feel like, this building needs to be reserved for public safety, and all of a sudden, if we have a homeowners group out here that takes up all the parking spots and then some, how do emergency vehicles necessarily get in, get out, and I just, I don't know.
Well, and it's just not homeowners associations, sometimes the seniors use it, there's a knitting group that uses it, so I just didn't know where, where to draw the line, and I think this will help offer some of that guidance.
Wouldn't it be great when we have a center down on River Road?
Yeah, that would be nice.
I don't know, I.
Can we table this until I'm back in the country?
Okay.
Will Jamison have any effect on it?
Maybe Guinness.
Guinness, huh? Yeah, I don't, do we have to?
I think it's a better conversation with all the others in one building or whatever, but I think, Chris, you and I are leaning the same way, it's just, you know, you know, the knitting club or whatever that comes in there, Michael, it's five seniors, and as like Chris had just said, once we have the other building up and ready, there'll be a senior area at River Road. You know, maybe, maybe, you know, that for there, and then, you know, but allowing homeowners associations and everybody coming in there, I'm going to agree with Chris, it's a lot of people, and it's taking out car spaces, but on top of it, you know, when we built this building, we kind of took off. Somehow, there's an addition that's not put on there, and we have full staff, and we just approved the budget, so we're going to have more firemen, and they use that kitchen. So, it's not what it was at one time. I don't even think we have, if I recall, we turned an office into a sleeping area, correct, Michael? Because there was no sleeping headquarters anymore anywhere. So, there's firemen that's in the building, and they're using the kitchen, and, you know, I just don't think it's the proper, you know, five seniors, we're not going to get them to go out and get insurance.
No.
Knitting, knitting, that's what I'm just saying, I don't know.
We can, I think we can table it, too. You okay with that, Michael?
Yeah, I can handle it. There's no immediate need.
No. Okay.
I mean, if the homeowner associations and stuff call in, Michael, or whatever, I would just advise them right now that we don't have a policy, and we're working on it, we suggest they go elsewhere right now.
Okay.
Okay.
I can do that.
Cool.
And I saw that Justin is here from the golf course.
Justin is going to join us in executive session, discuss the contract for the.
Well, right now, it's golf course water treatment system.
Oh, well, I don't know, Justin, you probably don't know much about the golf course water treatment system, do you?
Is this more just to let us know?
No, that's more of an internal thing.
More just to let us know.
Well, more than that, actually, so the town is actually being required to put in a system.
Yeah.
To treat the water at the facility. And MSK Engineering has given us a quote, and they have suggested to use clear water filtration. The amount.
So why don't we wait, because you're saying it's a quote, can we just do that at executive session, and we'll come out, and once we have the contracts or whatever in front of us, then we could take action afterwards, instead of just going through it?
Move that to executive.
Yeah. It's not like we're taking action tonight on things after the session.
And this is then, warrant public hearing for zoning by law amendments.
Yeah, so the board needs to make a motion, make a motion to hold a public hearing on April 22nd for the most recent.
I thought we did these fairly recently.
Amendments to the bylaw. Well, this is, this is round two.
Is this even more?
Yeah.
Okay.
So moved.
What would be an appropriate date to warrant it for?
April 22nd.
It would have to be April 22nd, April whatever.
Okay, all right.
So moved.
Yep. All in favor of April 22nd for zoning bylaw hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
So just to give a little update on that, that was because of S-100 with the housing and everything.
Yeah.
You know, Lisa still had to make more changes to that, they made some changes to some of the definitions, they made how one measures height of a building, it wasn't very clear before, so we'll be going over that when we have that hearing in April.
Okay. And we're up to you.
So, in your packets, is the, what do we start with, general?
Says general fund comparison.
Fund comparative budget report. I don't, our revenue is significantly higher than years past, a lot of that just has to do with tax collection and the increase in the state education fund, but there are no significant outliers, no red flags that I see in the revenue report.
Mm-hmm.
We've had good gains on interest income, the checks from the post office are all clearing.
That's a good sign.
And I believe, I believe Jim and Linda are doing a very good job on short-term rental collection.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think if you go to that line item, Linda's really killing it on there. I think it's like 203 or 208, and since that month or whatever, there's around another $15,000 in there, up more, and we have another letter going out tomorrow, that hopefully will get us to that final notch of the 270 this year. So I'm going to make a motion to accept the comparative report for the town financials.
Yeah, looks good. Okay. Anything else, Chris? Okay, all in favor of accepting the comparative report for February 24th, please say aye.
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 And you've got Green Mountain and the Treasurer.
Yeah, no significant changes to the Green Mountain National Golf Course, you know, we're still in the off-season. Anybody have any questions, I can try to answer them. Justin's here, he might be able to answer them, but he doesn't have a copy of it with him.
I'll make a motion to accept the Green Mountain National Town Post comparative report. There's nothing new in there, it's, we're just going to probably open next month.
Yeah, my only question would be rates, we had a lot of discussions with rates last year, and membership dues, if that, we were going to get those numbers ahead of time? Because last year, we didn't get them prior to them being published.
Yeah, I can get those to you as early as tomorrow.
That'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay.
So my motion on the table to accept the town course comparative report.
Okay. And, maybe Justin can explain that, this is something that people keep asking me, and I'm not sure I'm giving them the right answer. On the first section, it says 18 whole greens fees, but then it says special greens fees. Does that mean, like, when a group comes in? Because that's what I've been telling them, is, it's not necessarily 100%. Is a special greens fee, is it when a group comes in?
Yeah, the special greens fee is going to be anything that's not the rack rate typically, so whether it's a group rate, or whether there's a tournament, or something of that nature, anything outside that normal rate is going to filter into the special greens fees. We look at everything to gather all greens fees, but when they're in the point of sale, they're going to map to the two different areas.
Well, good, because that's what I was telling them.
Great.
It was when the groups came in, and the others. Okay.
Second on Jim's motion?
Yeah. Anything else we need to know on the comparative report? Well, actually, it's just a comparative report, so it's pretty much what it is. Okay, so, all in favor of accepting the comparative report for the golf course for February 24th, please say aye.
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 Okay.
I'll make a motion to accept the Treasurer's report.
Yep.
Anything there, Michael, we aware of, or?
No, restricted funds, it's something that I'm working with Ricky on, the bitumis resurfacing, there's only 141,363 there, so that means, you know, 100,000 will be allocated to that next year.
Yeah.
So you're looking at a total summer budget after July of 241,000. So we're probably not going to focus too hard on paving, any significant paving this year. A lot of the work is going to revolve around stormwater.
Yep.
So, so just to kind of give you guys an idea, we base some of our decision-making off of these kind of longer-term financial pools, money pools. So, no, street signage is also over, but I think some of that should have been allocated to a different account, traffic control devices, so the signs that we purchased, the radar signs we purchased, I think, got put under street signage. That was a new town manager thing, so we can, we can always do a journal entry and put it into the correct account.
Okay.
Those are the only kind of red flags there.
Okay. So Jim's made a motion, I'll second it.
Okay. Now, my question has to do with the first section of the Treasurer's report.
Okay.
You look at the.
That was a new town manager thing, so we can, we can always do a journal entry and put it into the correct account.
Okay.
Those are the only kind of red flags there.
Okay. So Jim's made a motion, I'll second it.
Now, my question has to do with the first section of the Treasury's report.
Okay.
You look at the balance of $8.6 million. On the left side, it says restricted funds and due to the state, which adds to $10 million. Is the money due to the state in a separate account? That's my question. Because at one time, we talked about, because it wasn't due right away, of putting it in like a 60 or a 90-day CD to get some interest on it, is it possibly in a different account?
So it is not, this is as of February, since the state, since this date, the town went and sought reimbursement, or disbursement with the short-term note that we have for TIF. Mary Ellen's here, but I believe that was for 2 million plus, so that added to the revenue. And then we've got quite a bit of money owed to us from the state for the contract 1 through 3A. We were waiting for a couple of permits to be approved, they've been approved. We should be able to seek reimbursement through those projects for the construction that's already been, that's close to 2 million. We've got a state bond, we've got, we've got an approved bond from, from the state bond bank now for 1B that we can start reimbursing for. So there are a lot of expenditures here, expenditures here that come out of TIF that is not included in the report, so. Not trying to be exhaustive, but
No, that's good.
We've added a lot more money to the bank since, since this was generated.
My question.
The other thing going on here, Steve, is that all the work that's done up on East Mountain Road.
Yep.
I guess the TIF is being, TIF money is being drawn from that, on anticipation notes. But they're drawing money for all that work that's being done up there on, on East Mountain Road. And where we did like a year and a half ago, when we put a million dollars into one of those 5% bearing accounts.
Right.
We don't have the million dollars this, this year because it's in the row as well. Abby and group are working with FEMA to get reimbursed, correct, Michael?
That is correct, and I looked at her, her schedule values last week, and, you know, just category B, which is emergency work, we're looking for reimbursement soon, hopefully soon, of about a million.
Okay.
Right. And we had to pay the contractor, so that money was out of the general fund, that will go right back into the general fund.
Yes.
Okay.
But we still have a pile of work to do.
Yeah.
Yes. A lot of work, yeah. Okay, thank you, that answered my question. Okay. Is there public comment? Something that we didn't touch on that you would like to bring up? And...
I'm looking here, I don't see any hands for a's, but let me get to a poll screen. I'm actually going to stop sharing my screen. I don't see any hands raised.
Nope. I don't have other business.
I have nothing else public comment-wise, so.
Okay, so, um...
Executive session then.
I'd like to include in that, you know, the police department and the fire department over the weekend, I mean, I only left yesterday afternoon, they were very valuable in directing some traffic up above. And also, I'm sure the police department and many cars going off the road that they were getting called out to. So I'd like to tip our hats off to, on top of the highway guys, also the police department and the fire department.
Yep.
We agree. Yeah. Okay, so entertain a motion to go into executive session for contracts, both the golf course and the appraisal.
And personnel.
Personnel.
Well, personnel, okay, I wasn't aware of that, but that's fine.
I'll second that.
And what time is it, 7:05?
7:06.
7:06.